Okay, you're on.
Hey Bob.
Okay, we're all set?
Yep.
All right, this is Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting of North Branford, Connecticut on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. It's a Zoom meeting. It's, let me see, it looks like it's five after seven that we're starting. I want to start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the states of our home, which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice. Okay. All right, Michelle, roll call.
Hey. Mayor Vidleon?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano. Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Duty?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Gold?
Here.
Councilor Felicia?
Here.
Okay. Minutes of previous meeting. December 15th, 2020, Town Council.
Go move. Second.
Marie, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Does anyone need to abstain? Thank you.
Okay, before we get going, I just want to, first I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. And secondly, I just wanted to, public participation, we offer via Facebook at www.facebook.com/totucketTV or email comments to publiccomments@townofnorthbranfordconnecticut.com. We've got that out of the way. Let's move into Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondence and citizen statements.
None, no business.
Okay, unfinished business?
None.
New business, none, I have none. And last, we have citizen statements and petitions. I don't believe there's anything there either. Okay, regular Town Council meeting. First, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. The forces economic-
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 11B up to being the first order of business so that a vote can be taken on Tara Downs to replace Lou Pater Noster and hopefully, assuming that is favorable to have her sworn in by the town clerk who was at Town Hall with her.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Thank you.
Okay, so we can do that right now?
Sir. I'd make a motion to appoint Tara Downs to the Town Council to take the vacated seat of Louis Pater Noster.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Okay, we have a vote, Michelle? You want to do roll call? Let's do roll call vote.
Okay. Mayor Vidleon?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
No.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Felicia?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard Tara.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I regret the circumstances of why I'm here, but because Lou Pater Noster was such a significant loss to our town and this council, but I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you Tara.
They're going to have Lisa swear her in now so that she can be at work the rest of the meeting.
Yep. Lisa, you there?
I'm here. I'm here.
I think they're just going to move so that the Totaka TV can get a good shot of it.
We're trying to angle Tara toward the camera. Can you get us both?
They can't see because it's on Totaka TV, but they can't see it.
They can't see?
I don't think so.
Oh, can you, um, hold on.
I didn't get what he meant.
Oh, right.
All right Tara, can you see Tara now? If I turn this?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
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 Have you raised your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the North Branford Town Council to the best of your ability from what you got?
I do. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, I won't shake your hand.
Thank you so much, you're welcome.
Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Sarah, you can take your, oh, okay, you can take your hand.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we all set?
All set.
All right, we'll move into reports of committees, boards, and commissions. The first I have is Economic Development Commission Roger Salloway Monthly Report.
Yeah, there's a monthly report in the packet, rather extensive, covers quite a few items there. And the committee met also, commission met last night, also a lengthy meeting. They had two presentations, one by Lauren Lesvelt about a local is good program in terms of shopping local in a potential pilot program using QR codes. So the commission is evaluating that as a potential pilot. I think it has great potential to enhance local purchasing and awareness, if nothing else, about what we have to offer in town and to encourage shopping local and promoting each other. So that was a presentation. Also Kerry Duquez came with a Northford Center study that was done by an individual, put a lot of research into different aspects of the planning and zoning and codes that could help enhance development for the village, which I thought was rather interesting and a lot of information for the commission to digest, so they're going through that. And then regular updates Roger gave on the moving forward with the solar project. There was a little bit of a hiccup there with deep at the state level, but they've apparently ironed that out. And then he talked about the other projects we're talking about with potential for a proposal for multi-unit luxury apartments in Northford, a study, an expansion with other manufacturing clusters, and update on Destination North Branford, and a few other items in there. So it was a rather lengthy meeting, but very productive meeting. So that was economic development.
Okay, thank you Mike.
Sure.
Next we have Parks, Park and Recreation.
I was unable to attend the meeting last week, but I do see the Rec Director is on our Zoom meeting and maybe just you can give a few, a little update as to what is going on in Parkinsonburg.
Sure. The Recreation Commission met last week on the 29th and just discussed capital improvement ideas for the 21-22 budget, as well as moved the signs, playground signs to look to set up a public hearing for that as a general update. And then we just reviewed all of our programming since we didn't meet in November and December, all of the different things we've done, which Rose already brought up, the Candy Cane Lane, as well as our assist in delivering letters for Santa Claus this year. So we've had some wonderful programs and we're looking forward to bringing more forward for the new year.
Okay, thank you. Rose, anything else?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, let's go on to Police Commission.
The next Police Commission meeting is this coming Monday, January 11th.
Okay, thank you Marie. Fire Commission?
So there's no meeting since our last meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday.
Okay, thanks, thank you Ron. Next we have Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
All right, next is Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Next we have North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
Okay, the next meeting was originally scheduled for next Wednesday, January 13th, but we received an email this afternoon asking if some of us could meet tomorrow at 3:30. I don't know if that's going to happen. It has to do with the furniture, et cetera. So I don't know if that meeting will occur. If not, then we would have a meeting next Wednesday, the 13th. Unless Mike, if you know more about that.
Yeah, I was just trying to get it together if we can, but I won't know probably till tomorrow morning if we'll be able to pull that off. And that's sort of a specialized focus on a subject matter of internal FFNE, their furniture, well mainly furniture. So yeah, I think the bulk of the discussion will be next week.
Okay.
I think, did we skip, Mayor, did we skip over planning and zoning? Did I miss that?
No, I think I did. Okay, well, let's do planning and zoning then. I think I did, Mike, you're right.
Well, that's Tom Zampano and he's not here, but someone else has something.
No, I don't think so. Okay, all right, next is Finance Subcommittee.
There was no meeting.
Okay. Next we have Ad hoc Design Review Committee.
No meeting.
Okay. Okay, next we have the Town Manager's Report. Update on COVID-19.
Yes, so I did provide some data from East Shore Health District. In a nutshell, the numbers, as predicted, continue to rise based off of the Thanksgiving holiday. So if you recall, October's numbers, we had 44 positive cases. That rose in November to 117 and December it rose to 264. So we're doubling and more each month. So you know, January's numbers, when they come in, will probably reflect the holiday, Christmas, New Year holiday spike, if that's what we anticipate. So the numbers will be certainly about as high or higher expected for January. Unfortunately, that is the trend, you know, and hopefully that that will break or level off at some point, end of January, February, but just hard to predict at this point. So I have, you know, a bunch of slides in there that were provided. You get a sense of what's happening also with East Haven and Branford, the towns around us, and also part of the East Shore Health District in terms of comparable cases that are happening in the area. One other thing I wanted to point out, I mean, obviously we're going to continue to monitor this. I'm going to try and speak with the Health Director about his availability for potential briefing again on Friday. I had done in the past some Friday afternoon briefings live on Facebook to try and get some information out, especially concerning the numbers, but also a lot of questions and phone calls coming in about the vaccine. And so I did send out earlier today an email from the Director that had a quick summary of what the state is looking to roll out. And many of you have heard, I'm sure, from the media outlets about the rollout in phases. And I think that messaging and information will be updated this week. What I'm told is that Mike from East Shore is going to have further conversations and that maybe even the Governor makes an announcement on that. But essentially talks about the phase of one A and then a one B. And so, you know, what you have in one A are healthcare personnel, long-term care facility residents, first responders, you know, at risk of exposure to COVID. And so there's some definitions that I think we'll probably even try and get this document up on the website, just so people have some information to look at, because there's a link to the state portal that I think could be helpful with information. And we'll continue to monitor this. And through Mike, I anticipate we're going to hear more information on that. And again, there are some, you know, issues in terms of the rollout with respect to the supplies and the timing of supplies and clinics and how they're going to do that. But we'll try and get out as much information when we get it as quickly as we can. So I'm not sure if there's any questions on that, but unfortunately, it's sort of a wait and see where these numbers go and a wait and see on information for the vaccine rollout.
Okay, thanks Mike.
Sure.
All right, next we have Discussion and Review of Email Addresses for Commission's Members.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is not yet complete. I did submit a brief memo. This essentially comes in a request that came from the Fire Commission. The Police Commission has also inquired about the same thing, about boards and commissions having access to iPads and town email. And so, working with our tech person and Anthony to look at the costs that would be associated with that, if we were to issue iPads or some type of tablet device, it may not be iPads, but some, you know, lower cost alternative, and the actual accounts that we would need to set up in that. I have put together sort of a rough estimate, thanks to Anthony, and what we have with Office 365 and getting that set up and then the storage that we'll need to do that. So it's just food for thought as we continue to look at this, but I wanted to broach the subject with the Council, just to get an idea if this is, you know, an important item to pursue and to come up with a firm plan and dollars and cents. But I did talk with Vin Marino and one of the final things we're trying to evaluate is whether or not we can get away with, not get away with, but pursue a free service like a Gmail and set that up. And then, you know, we wouldn't have to have the devices you could use and access because it's cloud-based. You know, wouldn't have to issue an iPad, you just use whatever device, phone, tablet, and it goes and it's stored in the cloud. It's not stored on our servers. And that's the issue that I've got to work through within about passwords and protecting that data if we're not controlling, if it's not sitting on our server. And that's where the expense comes in of Microsoft, you know, Office 365, because, you know, typically for all of, well, for all of our departments and employees, we store that on our servers, we monitor that, and we have access to all of that. So there's some access issues. I'm just trying to look at the, you know, a low-cost alternative, if we can actually do a Gmail, set up the password, set up the user IDs, and then look at any time that we need to go in there to do any type of data searches that we can have access to that data. So unfortunately, it's incomplete at this time, but the other commissions are, I think, concerned about going forward if there is going to be an email, I'm sorry, an FOI request that asks for their business that they conducted as a member or commission member and getting access to potentially mixing personal with business emails. So this is a way to separate that out, but we just don't have all of the information at this point. And it could be just as easy as the Council saying, okay, forget about the, you know, this is too important, move forward, get a final number on Office 365 and go. But there's going to be some cost involved in that.
And Mike, this is, I would just mention, having had experience with this, you also have to be aware, if you're setting up these accounts, some people inadvertently set up distribution lists that can result in unofficial meetings that are then subject to FOI. So you have to be careful when you set up the accounts to make sure that you're compliant with FOI.
Right. Yeah, and unfortunately, yeah, that was one of the remaining issues with the requirements of FOI, if we would be able to set up a Gmail and do it that way. You know, it would be much easier for us to manage if it were in our system, but would cost a lot more.
Can you check with CCM and see what other towns do?
Sure can, yeah.
Or cost, whatever.
And does it make a difference, Mike, if it appears that the Fire and Police Commissions are the ones requesting this? Can we consider just providing it to them and not to every board and commission?
You could roll it out that way, sure. I don't think there's any, I just, yeah, the answer is yes. We can roll it out that way.
My gut is that the Library Board is not particularly litigious, nor is it likely that they're going to be sued. So not so sure it's a consideration for them if the cost is substantial on a per-person basis. We can contain it by keeping it to the Police and Fire Commission. Maybe it's something we have to bite the bullet on, but if I could look at those two different costs, I think would be helpful to all of us.
Yeah. However, I do know that the, I think there was an inquiry on the Rec Commission as well, at least from the Chairman, to include them as well. So it might just be the three commissions there that probably the most active, and I agree with you, I don't think library is going to be FOI-ed, but you never know.
Can I ask Dave a question? If they were going to be FOI-ed or whatever, do they have to provide their phone or their computer, or is it basically just that they're looking at their email? Because I think that's a concern. Maybe that would help us in terms of whether or not we have to provide iPads for everybody.
If I understand the question correctly, any communication, no matter what device you use, if it's on town business, is subject to FOI discovery. So whether it's-
No, my question is, if they were going to FOI, do they have to give them the phone? In other words, whoever's going to do it, or if it's some lawyer or federal organization?
There was no requirement that you turn over your phone or your iPad in the first instance. You're obligated to turn over the communications. If there's a dispute about whether or not that has occurred, all communications have been provided, a litigant who is making an FOI claim could ask the commission to require an individual to produce whatever device for, you know, for inspection. Now, that kind of request is not routinely granted by courts or anybody else, but it's a request that could be made for a turnover for a forensic examination of any device that was used. If, for example, somebody claimed that there was a, you know, intentional destruction of email or other communications, they could ask for a forensic examination of the device, because as we all probably know, or at least suspect, even though you delete things from your phone or your computer, there are still ways that some data can be recovered unless it's deleted in a specific way.
Thank you. I think that Eddie Purnier wants to speak. Ed, are you there? Ed, you're muted.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I mean, is it our right to ask a question right now?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
All right.
Go ahead, we're on the subject, go ahead.
I just don't know if you realize what a serious, I mean, I sent a letter to Mike probably a month ago requesting this. I mean, right now in the Fire Department, we have a serious problem. We have no communication at all. The only communications we're having right now is by a written letter, which is insane. I mean, we field, I field emails and calls probably three or four times a day, every day. And right now, we have no communications at all. Because the attorney did explain to us, and like the Attorney Zabel said tonight, that our phones and personal computers could possibly, you know, get taken. And there's not one commissioner on the Fire Commission right now that's willing to give up their phone or their personal computer. So, I mean, it's a serious problem that has not been addressed. I mean, and I sent a letter a month ago and have not received one notification either way. I'm getting secondhand talk that the Finance Committee shot it down, this one shot it down, that one shot it down, but not one letter or nothing in writing has ever been given to me.
I can tell you that the Finance Committee did not shoot it down, so I don't know where you heard that from. We did discuss it and we asked the Town Manager to get information to bring back to the Council, which is what we have tonight in our packet, and it's still not complete information. They're still looking at other options, because it is a large cost to the, so until we have all the information, I don't think that the Council can make a decision as to how this is going to go.
Well, I mean, I'm just letting you know right now, we have zero communication in the Fire Department right now. Other than a letter that's going to be slid under a door, that's the only communications right now that we have in the Fire Department.
Hey, I apologize guys, it's Ron Felicia. I was having problems with my computer, so I missed a good portion of what Attorney Zabel said. My only question is, and maybe he addressed it, and I apologize if he did, how can somebody confiscate your personal computer or your phone without a warrant?
I didn't mean to suggest that would happen without a warrant. The way it typically works is an FOI request is made for documents that are responsive communications. Then the town attorney, you know, our firm would contact the people involved and ask them to provide to us copies of any communications they've had relating to the various commission business. Those would then be produced, made available for production under FOI or in litigation. If there is then an allegation that, for example, somebody says you, not to say Joe Smith intentionally deleted or destroyed documents, they could file a motion with either the court or with the FOI Commission to say, we would like to have Joe Smith's phone, you know, that was used to engage in these communications produced to somebody for a forensic examination, because we have reason to believe that they have destroyed communications that are subject to our request, and they shouldn't be allowed to do that. The court would then have to evaluate that request and the response that would be made on behalf of the town and on behalf of the party against, the person against whom it's made, to make a determination as to whether or not they would order the production of the device at issue, whether it's a phone or a laptop or a computer, for a forensic examination by a computer specialist to determine whether or not any responsive materials had been deleted. That's how it would typically work.
Would they still have to, would they still have to present probable cause to the court?
Well, they would have to present their case to the court, and the court would have to make a determination. It's not really a probable cause standard, it's a motion standard. It's whatever the court believes is appropriate based upon, or the Freedom of Information Commission, based upon the evidence that's been presented in support of and in opposition to the application.
Thank you.
You know, typically, if the response is, well, I think something's been destroyed, that's not enough for courts to say, well, I'm going to give you access and require somebody to give up their device for a forensic examination. There has to be some evidence that there was some destruction of responsive materials before a court would order that kind of investigation.
And if the person that the request was made of to produce, say, the emails, was fully forthcoming and provided everything that they were supposed to provide, then the chances of that happening are pretty slim, right?
Right, because there would be, you know, we would, for example, submit an affidavit that says, you know, Joe Smith, I made a diligent search of my, these devices upon which I used on occasion to produce information. I have produced all responsive emails. I used these search terms to try to locate anything that's responsive. I did not, you know, delete anything from my, you know, my devices, and therefore I produced everything in compliance with the request that was made. And that's the way it typically plays out. I mean, there usually has to be, I mean, as I said, some evidence that, you know, somebody has proof that, well, you sent an email to me and I've got these three emails and it hasn't been produced by so-and-so because even though I know I got it, and now I need to know why you didn't produce it.
David, this is Mike. I just wanted to follow up with your experience in towns you deal with, and, you know, 169 towns in Connecticut. Are the other towns going to the level of other boards and commissions, or is it just their town council or Board of Aldermen or?
It's really, Mike, it's a mixed bag, and it, you know, depends, you know, to the extent to which there have been problems. I mean, the, if, I mean, in general, my, you know, my advice about that stuff is that you limit the email communications among board members or commissions outside of, you know, the regular meetings because in our experience, the real problems exist when one commission member, you know, thinks they're only doing something, they send an email, in other words, but then they copy all of the other commission members, and you created in, you know, an unscheduled meeting then. And that, you know, that violates FOI if you copy everybody on commission business. So it's really, frankly, a better practice to limit email communications about commission business between meetings because you're inadvertently creating 15 meetings between your monthly meetings or your bi-weekly meetings if you're circulating emails among all commission members.
Right.
I feel we shouldn't leave the Fire Commission in the dark, and we may have to move ahead with this and get email addresses for five commissioners. Because Ed's in a situation between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, but they're not asking for just email addresses, they're asking for devices.
Well, we could give them email addresses, we can't give them devices yet.
Let me ask a question. I mean, I didn't understand what the nature of the communications that are taking place between meetings of the commission, what are the necessary communications that are taking place, you know, between a commission member and somebody in the Fire Department? I mean, I served on the Fire Commission in Fairfield for 10 years, and we were very careful, and I had my own device, and I'm an attorney, so I'm being careful, but we were very careful to limit the communications, you know, between meetings just for the reasons that I've explained. And so if it's an issue of, so if you're exploring this issue, I would suggest out of an abundance of caution that, I mean, I'm happy to talk with Ed about, you know, what are the workplace issues that are arising that require these communications and if we can come up with some sort of solution that doesn't create all of the parade of horribles that I've described to you that I'm, you know, that I do as a lawyer, you know, that's my business, but I'm happy to talk with Ed about what the day-to-day communications are and the need for the devices so that we can try to come up with a solution.
Right now, during the COVID process here, the deputy chief, the deputy fire chief is getting requests from the public about doing drive-bys for, you know, children's birthdays and everything, and it has to be approved by the Fire Commission because the Fire Commission is in charge of apparatus and all the apparatus in this. So it has to be presented to me, and I have to approve it, you know, and I have to talk to my other commissioners and approve it, otherwise, from what I'm told, if we do not approve it, then they are not covered by the town. So every drive-by that's been going on in the town has to be presented to me, and I have to present it to the other commissions and approve it. So, I mean, you know, and lately, I mean, that's not just all. I mean, the chief has numerous questions during the course of, you know, the week and everything, but, but right now, just the drive-bys alone, and there's no communications. I mean, if somebody wants a drive-by for Saturday and they slip a note under my door, you know, requesting a drive, now I have to take the note, you know, and get in touch with the chief. And I don't know how to get in touch with the chief because it's my personal email.
Okay, well, on the drive-by issue, I'd be surprised, I mean, I haven't looked at that particular issue. We might be able to come up with a solution that allows, you know, the commission to vote on a monthly basis that authorizes up to five drive-bys, that satisfies the insurance concerns. I don't know whether there's something in your town charter, I haven't looked at that particular issue. I do, I do say that, you know, if there's an issue where the chair of the commission needs to be able to communicate regularly with the chief of the department, you know, that may be, you know, a way to start because, you know, those kind of communications typically happen more regularly between the chair and the Fire Department, and then the chair does what, you know, the chair is normally supposed to do, which is get a sense of the commission without having a meeting in order to deal with the day-to-day issues. But, you know, we can certainly look at the issue of whether there's, you know, if you have these requests, you know, for the drive-bys, and if there's an insurance issue, we can figure out if there's a way to avoid having you to caucus, you know, everybody every time that kind of request is made.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yeah, who's this?
It's Victor.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Victor.
Well, there's other issues too with the Police Commission needing them to private emails. We get contacted for communications on a daily basis. We're in the middle of designing the communications. I need to speak or communicate with the chair of the Fire Department in relations to that. We also have a building committee meeting for the commissioners. We have a new building going up that requires a lot of communications, okay? And there is a lot that we do on our emails, and I like to make it clear to the public and I like to make it clear to everybody on the town council. I am the subject. Me personally am the subject of the ones that got all the FOIs. That's, so somebody FOI'd, me personally, for my records, which the town attorney's working on, and I have no problems giving whatever I have to give at any point in time. So I don't want to make it like it's the Fire Commission or the Police Commissioners, it's the chair to the Police Commission that is getting the FOIs. And quite frankly, it rattled the town because there was rumors being spread around there that you can cease your personal work phones, communications, and quite frankly, I don't blame anybody. I'm going through it now, and it's really not a big deal. Have, you know, the town attorney's handling it, but we do need our own emails and tablets if we're doing this much volunteering and communication. I'm on three or four different boards with Eddie Peneer as the chair. Dave Palumbo, Joseph Atello's also doing it with us, and the communication is a lot right now with a new police station, a design of communications, speaking to the state on a regular basis. I'm not communicating with anybody at the Police Department right now myself, and neither are the commissioners. So the Fire Department and the Police Department are at a pretty good stance though. And quite frankly, this has been going on for two months, and, you know, we can end this by just getting whatever we got to get to, whoever we have to get it to, and proceed on for the best interest of the town. Because right now, it's just causing anarchy. Now, you understand what we need, Dave? Or Attorney Zabel?
Yeah, absolutely, Victor. I understand, I was just addressing the particular request there. I do agree that the, you know, the chair of the commission normally has more communications with the department on the day-to-day business. You know, my, it's generally through the chair that that happens, and that's why I suggested maybe it's something, again, I haven't studied the issue here, but it may be, you know, if there are cost concerns, maybe an initial start is to provide those kind of devices with the chair of the commission because that does two things. It focuses the communications through the chair, which is probably the best place to have those kind of communications take place because the chair is generally more sensitive to the legal requirements. And secondly, it avoids the potential that if you have these devices in all commission hands, that, members of the commissioners' hands, that they're going to be communicating, you know, among themselves inadvertently and having, you know, inappropriate, well, I was going to say illegal, but they're meetings of the commission by accident that are not duly noticed and violate the Freedom of Information Act. So maybe, I'm just throwing out, you know, as a possibility that maybe a way to start is to start with just the chairs of the commission because those are the ones who are supposed to have more of the day-to-day communications.
Again, how do I communicate? Eddie Peneer, the chair, and Joseph Atello, the vice chair, are an intricate part of communicating right now with communications.
Okay.
Okay? We have to talk to the guy Paul Zito, which is the consultant for the town, to design the system with our chiefs, okay? If we can't communicate right now, it's hindering everything we're doing. We are falling behind schedules, okay? And like I said, there's more involved. We also have to worry about the furniture, the outside stuff for the Police Department, what they're picking up for roof materials, inside materials. We are communicating on a daily basis.
Yeah, but aren't those committee decisions, like for the Police Department? That was the meeting that they talked about before, that might be tomorrow. So some of those issues, aren't those being dealt with at the committee level when the committee meets?
Yeah, but how do you get all the emails to everybody? You have two council members that have private emails that are, you know, council member emails for the town, and I just got notified of a meeting at 3:00 possibly tomorrow over a furniture stuff through my emails, which I have everything blocked. I just heard about it now. You honestly think I'm going to receive? I got an IT guy that worked on everything, everything's blocked from the town. I got zero communications right now. I actually had to call our police chief in order to get the Zoom meeting stuff. He didn't have it, I ended up going online myself. So, yeah, it's hindering everybody for communicating at this point, and I just want to make it clear, it's not a big deal to get FOI'd, you just produce the paperwork and everything else. The issue is, it just takes time with the attorneys to get all the proper paperwork and procedures, and Dave Zabel could tell you, it's not just an easy process. It's just, it's a waste of taxpayers' money for certain things, but the moral is, we need all this stuff to operate now. We have major projects going on, and as the chair to the Police Department that's in communications with the Building Department people, how do we, how do I communicate?
Victor?
Yes.
Walter Goode.
Yes, Walter.
Can't, I mean, this might sound like a really making it simple question, but can't we just use our cell phones?
I have no issues with any of it, with using it, but I'm waiting for the town attorney's response, with the town manager's response, because the FOI and the letters that I personally received, okay, that I got from the town hall.
Yep.
In some of the paperwork that I got, not in reference to FOI, reference to my family, okay? So why would I use my cellphone at that point until I get a ruling from the town attorney on what I should do?
I'm just saying, myself, being that I'm a council member, I have, you know, an email and a computer here, the only time I turn it on is for council meetings, and I, you know, check it for an hour or two a week just to see any new emails. I mean, I'm not saying-
Yeah, I don't need, yeah, Walter, I don't need a tablet, I just need a private email that's backed up by the server, so next time somebody wants to FOI me or FOI anybody, they just call the town hall and they give them the information.
Yeah.
You got to remember, FOI specific, and Dave Zabel's there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if I have to hire my IT guy to come in and get all my paperwork, Dave, am I not entitled to get reimbursed for that?
Well, when you say if you personally hire someone, then that's between you and the town whether they reimburse you for that. What the issue is with FOI is, I think you've all hit exactly right, the issue is, how do you make the method of communication such that it's easy to search and produce in response to an FOI request? Victor was, I think, correct in saying that if he had a, you know, victor@northbranford.org email address, and he only used that email address for email communications on anything that had to do with the Police Commission or the town, it would be very easy, and if that email address is controlled by the town so that the town can say, you know, things have been preserved and they're not deleted, it would be easy to, much easier to respond to an FOI request by saying, your IT person goes in, they check his email account, they pull everything off, and that's what gets produced. Subject to, of course, a privilege review if Victor has had communications with Ben or me or somebody else at our firm on legal issues, you know, there have to be, that still have to be that privilege review, but it makes the initial gathering of responsive electronic communications much easier. I can't speak to, like was talking about earlier, about what the cost of setting up separate email addresses for commission members are. I don't know what your electronic technology is, and I'm not an electronic, you know, not a person who does that stuff, you know, for a living anyway. But the easy, Victor was, I think, correct in that the easiest way to respond to an FOI request is that if the commission members or the town councillors had a particular email address that was only the one, the only one that they used for town business, then it would be easy to gather those responsive communications. The difficulty comes when somebody uses, you know, different email addresses and different devices, and they save documents on a laptop, and they save some on their phone, and they save some on a tablet, and they do it all over the place. That's what makes the process cumbersome and burdensome.
So I would like to make a recommend, I would like to make a motion, and then we can, is, since the discussion was that we start with the Police Commission and the Fire Commission, we have the cost in our packet as far as what it would cost through Office 365, because the critical piece of this, what I've heard through this discussion, is the storing of the emails and access to them. And the only way you're going to get that is through the 365 Office email account that the town has right now, because the other option was to get a whole new domain, but there's no email security or encryption or anything like that, so we don't have access to them. So what good is that, to purchase that, to get that option? And so if it's $168 a year per email, and there's five commission, five commission members on Fire and five on Police, that's 10 people, that's $1,680 for the first year for email addresses. And I'm just addressing email addresses right now because, as we've heard, the actual getting the device from the person is pretty low that someone would have to do that, in order to do that. So I think the first step of getting email addresses for them and those two commissions, so I would like to make a motion to get email addresses on the town Office 365 email address for the five Police Commission members and the five Fire Commission members.
I'll second.
Rose, could I just interject, I think the Rec Commission is also requesting that, if you wanted to add them to that.
Right now, I think-
I want to add the Rec Commission.
No, I think right now, we're just going to add Police and Fire due to all of the things that are going on, and we'll start with that and see once where, what that is. And we still have more time to investigate some other options, but- And we still have more time to investigate some other options, but for those two Commissions to get them going and keep the projects on track.
I'll second that immediately, though.
Yeah, that can start, do we have email, how many email addresses do you get under the Office 365? Do we have room to add 10 more people?
I don't know, but I can find out tomorrow. We can get, we can start that process tomorrow, get those two Commissions on board.
Okay.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Would you like roll call or is all in favor fine?
I think, I think all in favors.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Town Council and the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor, which I know who is not on the line. Thank you for providing those, so we can continue being proactive with the Fire Commission, and thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Vic. Next, let's go into our community events and presentations.
You got resignation, Bob.
No.
I'm sorry, did I jump ahead? I apologize.
No, no community events or presentations.
Okay, all right. Pretty soon, Joe. Next, we have citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Okay, nothing there.
Wait, after wait. Are you checking Facebook?
Give me a second. Nothing on Facebook. Nothing on public comment.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Next, we have number 11, resignations and appointments. Resignation of Carrie Duquesne as Town Planner.
Yeah, unfortunately, Carrie has submitted her resignation and is moving on to another community in Connecticut, and we're sorry to see her go, but that is the nature of professional development. She was here six years, I thought did a great job for us. I want to thank her publicly.
I agree, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, a former Town Council member asked me to please publicly state, and that would be George Miller, that he's very, very upset to hear that Carrie's leaving, and I promised him I would mention that at this meeting.
All right, thank you, Marie. I like George's opinion. Thank you. I feel bad she's going too, and I'll be in during the week to talk to her. Okay, next, we have unfinished business, discussion and action. Discussion of building projects, schedule, committees, OPM and CMAR.
Yeah, and that really came from the last meeting on our discussion of the building projects. Obviously, we've got the Police Department, the new high school, and the masonry work for the MBIS all coming together at one time, and we discuss the schedule and also committees and the council functioning as the building committee, at least at the beginning, and potentially subcommittees helping out in that process. And OPM is just the, you know, owner's project manager, and then the construction manager at risk, those concepts going forward as the architects begin to put forth their construction documents as we move into the next phase. It's so important to have the discussion. And further on in the agenda, you do have the specs for an OPM under Item 13B, and we have the architect's contract and award as well, but it was discussed at the last meeting that we should have this item back again to have a more robust conversation on where we're headed and how we want to do it. So, again, the council, if it decides to take the route of functioning as the permanent project building committee, there is, you know, potential that we'll be meeting every Tuesday, or unless the council allows the Finance Committee to take some of it, and for the ad hoc design committee in lieu of the permanent project. Permanent project is short members, so if the council wants to go by way of permanent project, it would have to begin looking at individuals to appoint to that committee.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, so I mean, I'd love to hear from the council and any thoughts or ideas if we're willing, as a group, to take all that on, or do we want to sort of plot it out, if you will, with respect to the schedule and the amount of workflow that's coming through?
Well, I think, I know the Deputy Mayor had contacted you today to get on the next agenda schedule, information about clerk of the works and exactly what that position entails, what they do in conjunction with the architect, just so that we have more information. That's how the Jerome Harrison and the auditorium were built, using a clerk of the works. And I think we just need more information in regards to that in addition to the presentation we had at our last meeting about a construction management team, and which way we go. So I think we need a little bit more information.
Yeah, I did speak with Tom briefly. He had asked, and I've been helped by the architects in conversations with both Rusty and Bill Silver with respect to, you know, the size and scope of these projects. And now, I think you're right. I think when you talk about the masonry work at MBIS, important to certainly have a clerk of the works, but probably not necessary, probably doesn't rise to the level of having a firm in an OPM, you know, taking care of a small project, like, or a smaller project. It's going to be a pretty good-sized project, but not to the magnitude of a high school, which may, there may be value in an OPM, and maybe you have a clerk of the works working on the Police Department and the MBIS masonry work. So I've begun to reach out and look and get information on that, and we'll have that available for the 19th, and trying to evaluate which direction we go, but I don't have that yet, but I will begin that process.
Thank you.
Mike, it's Ron. As part of that presentation for our next meeting, can you also have whoever's, or ask them, please, whoever's making that presentation to also explain the differences between the two, the pluses and minuses of clerk of the works versus a construction management company? Just for us who aren't familiar with it, and the public, anybody that might be watching, just so we can make a better informed decision. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Michelle, the Purchasing Assistant. When the specs were put together for the OPM, on the proposal page, there's three fees that could be either given to one company to oversee the three projects, or you could break it out by project and assign an OPM to each individual project if the council decides to go that way. Clerk of the works has become kind of an outdated terminology, and OPM kind of took over, or a construction manager. So over the years, the terminology clerk of the work is kind of dying out, and the OPM is now the new terminology in the purchasing world. If somebody has a better description between the two, I'd love to hear it, but through my years of purchasing and everything, the clerk of the works terminology's kind of died, and OPM has taken over. The way the specs are currently written for the OPM, and the sooner we get somebody on board for these projects, the better, since they're all going to be starting this summer. But certainly can defer it until the meeting on the 19th if there's more information that you'd like Mike and I to get for you, and then at that point, hopefully, the specs would be approved one way or the other.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, if I could just add, yeah, I think when we get maybe then to Item 13B, and maybe hitting the pause button and waiting for the 19th, to have a conversation and understanding of the definition, or really, maybe it's not a clarification of the definition, it's a clarification of the scope of the work in terms of what you would have, maybe an individual clerk of the work, so to speak, professional, and the scope of the work they do for some a smaller project like the MBIS masonry work and/or the Police Department versus a larger firm in doing an OPM. And it really, I think, it comes down to, you know, the overhead and what our representatives and colleagues in their last presentation told us about close to, I think, 1% of the project cost. That's a significant amount of money that maybe a clerk of the works within the individual professional, you might get, you know, better value for it. But again, that's the difference, so I'll have to work out for the meeting on the 19th. As far as the, as far as the schedule and the committee, is the council comfortable with taking on that role of building committee?
Well, I think it's hard to say right now without having the meeting on the 19th and having all of this information as to which way we're going to go with it.
With that, we've got to wait till the 19th.
And with that, I'm currently working on specs for a construction manager for the project, so as the Town Council decided if they want a construction manager at risk or what, so I can start working on specs to present that to you also on the 19th. Because without a construction manager or an OPM, it's the architect doing the design, and they'll be working with him either, so time will run out eventually by the time we have a selection committee for the OPM, for the construction manager, and, you know, Town Council approving the specs, so we could be potentially into, probably at least March before anybody is chosen.
So what did we have for MBIS?
We had construction manager. They were not at risk. We, the town, took on all of the contracts and did all of the paperwork.
We don't want, whatever we had for MBIS, that's what we don't want.
Right, that's why we were setting it up to bring a bid spec for a construction manager at risk. And that's, so that hasn't changed, and that's the direction we're going to be moving in.
Think that's the way we should go.
Yeah. Present a spec that way.
Okay, so we'll work on that and present that to you on the 19th, and then Town Council can decide, you know, go from there if that's the way they want to set it out to bid. And time is of the essence. If all of these projects are to start this summer, one of the things I've discussed with Mike is, my secretary only works 25 hours per week. When we did MBIS, my secretary, prior secretary, was full-time at the time, and that position is also secretary to our social service director. So this past Thanksgiving and Christmas is a huge amount of time that is spent with social services, and takes away from the 25 hours that she has as central office, you know, the Town Hall and everything, within my department, which is also risk management too. So one of the things I've discussed with both Mike and Anthony is increasing her hours to full-time. So those additional 10 hours per week could be charged off to the jobs, because at this point, there's a huge amount of specs. We're also going to be doing specs for the new trash whaler, and also all the construction projects that are taking place all at once.
Michelle, this did come up at our last Finance Committee meeting, and we directed the Town Manager to come back to the council with information and costs of increasing that position and duties as exactly as to what it would cost. So that's what we're waiting for at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's Ron. Just maybe a silly question, but does that person want a full-time position? Are they interested in a full-time position?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have to add an item on the agenda. It'd be, under New Business, be 13F, be fiber optic for Ocean Kelsey's tower.
I'll second that. So it's an amendment to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, that was F, Mike?
Yes, 13F.
Okay. All right, we don't need, we need a vote on that?
Yes.
All right, it was made by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, I believe.
Before we go any farther, can we discuss it?
It's just an amendment to the agenda, Walt.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Motion is made, if it's made.
Okay, can I get a vote?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to abstain?
Mr. Mayor, it's Ron. I'd also like to add something, 13G. I'd like to add a motion for an executive session for our next meeting for personnel matter involving the Town Manager.
Next meeting. Okay. I need a second for that?
I'll second.
Was that you, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it was made by Councilor Plicia, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Any discussion on that?
Just a clarification, we're voting to add this to the agenda of the 19th or tonight?
The 19th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so this can't just be put on the next agenda for the 19th?
That's what I thought, Michelle. I don't know.
I thought we were doing it tonight because we had to give notice to the Town Manager, so it was just easier to do it this way, so he had plenty of notice.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I guess it doesn't make any difference, Michelle. It'll be on the next agenda?
I don't think there's any harm in voting on it, but it does seem irregular, which is why I couldn't do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, let me see where I am here. We on New Business, I believe?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. New Business, discussion and action. The first one is review and approval of bid specifications for bid number seven, 2020, 2021, concrete work for pavilions at North Farms Park and Norfolk Park.
Okay, the issue with this is in our agenda packet. We have page one of this bid spec, and then it goes.
It's five.
And then we're on page five of the NBHS project, so we're missing a lot of information. We can't, we can't discuss this or vote, take any action on it because we only have the first page.
Right, right, okay. Mike, anything on that?
Yeah, I have the whole pages, but it doesn't do you any good if it's not in the Dropbox. So it might have been just a feeding loading area, I don't know.
My suggestion would be, I know this was put together and Town Hall was closed, but before it's put into Dropbox, someone should review the packet to make sure that all the pages are what you scanned on here, because this is going to have to be tabled until our next meeting, because we can't take any action on it.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to table it?
I make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have review and approval of bid specifications for RFP slash Q number four, 2020, 2021. Okay, next we have review and approval of bid specifications for RFP slash Q number four, 2020, 2021. For OPM. Is it?
Yeah, so this is what we discussed earlier with respect to, you know, an OPM versus a clerk of the works. So what I think we're going to do or suggest to do is that the council tabled that one as well. And, and we rework it combined with a clarification on, on scopes for, you know, an OPM. And if it's, if it's going to be valuable for an OPM on a, on a high school. And clerk of the works for the other two, or clerk of the works for all three. So I'm not sure.
I'm not even sure that we had that in our package. Because we went from only one page for bid spec seven. And then we pick up with page five, something for the high school. I don't see anything in here for OPM. Construction manager, at least in my tablet, I don't see anything in my packet for that.
You don't have anything for 13B?
No, I don't have anything listed as 13B.
Yeah, okay.
The next item that we go to, the next thing, item that we go to that's labeled is like 13, 13E.
Now, these are all in the hard copy.
Well, in our tablet, we don't, which is all that we have. It goes on page 55 in our tablet of the document, it's 13E. Everything before that, I'm not exactly sure what it is, because we don't have, we, we don't have anything labeled.
Is it? Isn't, isn't, on page 45, 44, isn't that number three?
I, I have no idea.
Well, it's...
44 is an RFQP for architectural and engineering services for design and construction for a new high school.
Right, so you're saying we don't have that whole thing?
I, I don't know what that, is that?
That's C, that's C.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, nothing's labeled, so, so I don't know if it's item 13B, 13C.
Right.
Just, everything just runs together.
Okay, so there had to have been a major glitch in terms of the, because all of them, like Michelle said, in the, in the, in the printed packet, 13B, and like any other packet, it'll have the, the very first page will have the heading, Agenda Item 13B and RFQ number four. It's labeled on the first page, so the machine or the scanner probably...
I don't, I don't see anything for RFQ number four in my packet. I have an RFQ three.
Right.
But I don't see anything for RFQP number four.
Nor do I.
But it looks like everything's there for number three.
What is number three?
Item C, you mean?
Yes, item C.
RF, RF, RFQ slash P number three.
Right, it looks like that, it starts on page... Page 44.
You have just three pages?
Do you want to have 13B tabled and move to 13C?
We don't have it, so we're going to have to.
Yeah. But it looks like that item C is there, that it's all there.
I, I don't know, because it's, we start with number, we start with page five on page 39 for RFQP number three. Architectural and Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Administration for a New High School.
Yeah, that is letter C.
Okay, so that, that, that starts on page five in our packet on page 39. So obviously, we're missing some pages.
Well, then they're mixed up, because I think then the beginning, the rest of it starts on page 44.
Yeah, so, so the, yeah, item, item B is what we were going to table anyway. The RFQ four is not in your, in your tablet. Item number C is the award of RFP Q three, which is just a one-page memo from me with a suggested motion to award the Architectural Engineering Services to QA and M and, and the recommendation of the selection committee.
I, I see that.
What page is that, Michael?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I'm going off the, the paper form, I don't have my tablet, that would... That should, well, again, I don't know the proper page count if there are pages missing. But I thought Rose said it's somewhere in, in the 33 or 40, range 44.
Yeah, but I, I don't see any motion from you recommending QA and M.
Nor a one-page memo, Rose.
Yeah, I, I didn't see anything like that.
Can, can, are we sure we have somebody review it before they hit the send key on the council packet?
Yeah.
This is it, right?
For sure.
Difficult to make.
It's, it's difficult though, because as it's scanning, you may have the whole packet in front of you. And as it scans, you just can collect and you don't realize it, so it is difficult.
That's the email.
Yeah, we can, we can...
You know, this is what we have. I'm relying on a scanner, I mean, person to review it before they hit that key and send it out to nine council people.
Right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do an internal review first before we drop it in the Dropbox. Once it scans and we know it's gone through the scanner effect the right way and captured every, every page. But yeah, the, my, my memo is just a, it's a one-pager based on the, in fact, in fact, you should all have, I had to, in this item, this particular item should be in your email, because I had, I had, I had the wrong numbers in the, in the packet.
Yeah, I did see some of the emails.
And that is the one-page memo that I sent out Monday. So you should have that in your emails.
It's actually in the Dropbox, Mike, it's a separate, it's a separate document.
Okay, she did, okay, I thought I sent, I thought I emailed it.
If you go back to the date, it's, it's separate, I have it in front of me now.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought he just said if you didn't get it there, that people have it in their email.
It's, you had to get out of that packet and go back into the Dropbox, it's separate.
What's it labeled under? I'm in my Dropbox.
It says yesterday revised 13CPDF. It says, it was modified yesterday.
Yep, I got it. Okay, so our, so, so item 13B was tabled on the agenda.
We don't...
No, they didn't table it yet.
Ocean.
Oh, okay, so I, I tabled item 13B.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstained? Thanks.
Okay, C is next.
Okay, so C is for the award of RFQP number three. For the Architectural Engineering Services. So I'd like to make a motion that the town council hereby awards RFQ slash P number three, 2021, for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Administration for a New High School to QA and M, Architecture of Farmington, Connecticut, for a fee of $2,542,000.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion on that?
I would just like to say, so the, the committee met, and it was the, the committee was made up of myself, Marie Diamond and Tom Zampiano from the town council. And Marcia Noferio, Shawna Papaholzer, and Jonna Bosama from the Board of Education. And then Mike Paulus and Scott Schoonmaker were also part of the committee. They did not vote for the recommendation, but they were part of the committee. We had 10 firms that submitted proposals. The committee narrowed it down to four. And we had presentations from those four committees and heard their proposals. And QA and M did an excellent job, I thought. Rusty actually came back with some revisions to his original plan that he presented, that the committee was very pleased with. A few new ideas, basically, it's the same layout, just changed a little bit. And he explained to us how we can avoid issues with the wetland situation, because that's a ma, that was a major concern, and not having to involve the Army Corps of Engineering. If we had to involve them, that would have cost us a minimum of four to six months on the project to get approvals and everything else. And we were very grateful to QA and M and Rusty for bringing their new ideas forward to us. And he also presented an idea that they're, that they're looking to now save the bridge from the auditorium to the new high school, which they will present to the state, see once to get approval, and his ideas as to how that would be incorporated, which was really nice to see in their project. And another big factor that QA and M had, along with one other firm, was involving the students at the high school who may be interested in architect or anything with the construction business, whether it's the STEM program or anything else, that they will kind of mentor them and, and have them involved in, in this process, which the committee was very happy to hear and listen to them. And we were very pleased with the presentation. And it was a unanimous vote from the committee to recommend QA and M to the town council for this.
I would also, I would also add that I think that QA and M did a wonderful job, a wonderful presentation. And I look forward to what they're going to be doing for our students.
Councilor Angeloni, you indicated that the Board of Education members included member Noferio Papaholzer, and I missed the last one.
Bosama, Jonna?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second. Can we have a vote, Michelle, whenever you're ready?
Sure, with all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
All right, next, I, I believe, I believe D is next. Does everybody have that? Review and approval, review and approval of AIA contract for services with QA and M on Architectural Engineering Services for North Branford High School Building Project. You have that, Rose?
Well, it's, it's hard to tell in here. The, we go from RFQP number three, which it says Architectural and Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Administration for a New High School is...
Okay.
Is that, I don't know if that's what this item is. It's not labeled in our packet as item 13, whatever, so I don't know.
It's 13D.
I, I don't see anything for 13D.
Okay, what do you have next, 13E?
We do have a 13E in here.
They would be actual AIA documents, B104 dash 2017. And then AIA document, B133 dash 2019.
The only, the only AIA document that I see in our packet is for item 13E, which is document B104 dash 2017. That's the only AIA document that I see in my packet. I don't know if anyone else saw anything else, but...
Is that the masonry repairs?
No. No, yes, that's for the intermediate school masonry and roof draining repairs. And then there's a second AIA document, B133 dash 209, which is for the high school.
How many pages are those?
Uh, hold on. The, the, the item, the AIA document, B104, is in our packet, starting on page 56.
And it's 14.
14 pages.
14, 16 pages.
And that one looks like it goes to... See, I think, because I'm, I'm up to page 67 and it looks like it's all part of the AIA, but you can't tell which one it is. Oh yeah, B104, it's still...
It's a total 15.
Or 217, starts on page 40, or goes up to page 69. And I don't see any other AIA document.
Okay, there's two of them, there's D and E.
Right, and the other one, B133...
Some people got 14 pages, some people got 16 pages. So, you know, we're missing pages in between, that's where we need the quality control.
So what do we do with these, do we table them?
Unfortunately, you have to, we don't have...
You don't have all the...
Information is.
Right. All right. Somebody want to make a motion on, for D? For North Branford High School Building Project, AIA. That's, that's what I have for D.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, that we table D and E.
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll do both of them? All right. And more, anybody else, anybody second?
I did.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Duty. Any further discussion on this? Can we have a vote, Michelle?
With all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you're... You're in it, you want to?
Had a phone call with the Ocean Kowskis today about the tower. And the fact that the fire department is running off old copper lines and even the police department's running over old copper lines. And there's fiber optic right outside the tower that we're going to be using. And we technically need that tower to clear up a lot of deficiencies in the fire department communications and police department communications. So before we, before we settle on a design phase for the new radio system, which is probably going to take maybe another year, we need to hook up this fiber optic. The upcharge will be a $500 per month for that. But it'll save, in the end, the cost of the copper lines. So I have a motion to make, and I could make that now. It's a consent for utility. Ocean Kowski's Tower LLC agrees to authorize Frontier Communications to install their optical ethernet equipment in con, in contact one fiber optic line to the town of North Branford's telecommunications equipment located in building number one, tower number one on our property at 88 Barstow Hill Road, Norfolk. There is a monthly upcharge of $500 for the service to the town of North Branford that will be soon begin in the date of installation and will be included in the monthly rental. This fiber line is for the exclusive use of the town of North Branford Fire, Police, and Public Works Departments only. This consent will be made as part of the agreement between Ocean Kowski's Tower and the town of North Branford.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, Mike, did, is Joe Ocean Kowski okay with that? Because at one point, they weren't ready to have the fiber put on.
Oh, I talked to him tonight and they assured me that they're ready.
Okay.
Mike, what's the rent now? It's 500 plus, what's the total rent? Uh, well...
Did they agree on the other one yet?
Um...
I don't think so.
That's still open.
Still open, right.
See, there, there's really no sense in coming up on an agreement now, because within the year, we're going to be on an 800 frequency. So all the, all, all the old equipment's going to come off and new equipment's going to have to go on. So, you know, that, that still has to be negotiated, because we don't know... because we don't know what equipment we're getting yet because the consultant hasn't, hasn't really actually designed the system yet. They're getting close, but they haven't. We're talking about present day. We're not talking about future.
Okay.
Present day.
So, whatever we're paying him monthly now, it's going to increase by $500.
Yes.
Until we get a new contract, once the system is designed and we knew, know what the new equipment is.
Yes, but this, this money was allocated in our last budget.
What, for the fiber optic?
Yes, for the fiber optic. We've been playing with this since April and we're down to, we're down to put it in.
So, who installs it?
I think it's Frontier, yeah.
So, so there's, so there's no cost to us to install it? We're just paying $500 a month?
Yes.
Until we get the new system?
Yes.
And then, and the new system is going to be fiber optic anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the copper lines are a thing of history, you know? And the fact that we're still on it is, shows, shows us how sad it is that we're still on copper lines. We're probably the only town in the state of Connecticut or on the East Coast that might be on copper lines.
Okay.
For, you know, somebody way in the backwoods, which I can't...
Do you know how soon they can do this?
They could do it tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
This is only, this is only last piece that I was working on that we have to get done because I have a feeling it'll improve communications a little bit to get us over that hump.
Okay.
If it's possible for me to get a copy of that motion, I would appreciate it. Otherwise, it's going to be paraphrased.
I'll send it to you, Michelle.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. You have the motion, Michelle, and a second?
I second it.
Okay, I thought so. Okay, any further discussion? Can I have a vote?
With all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Okay, next, Ron, I have, I don't know if this was settled already, but we have your executive session.
I gathered from everybody that we don't, I guess maybe we don't need to vote on this?
Just, I don't think, I just think we just put it on the agenda for next, the next meeting.
You add the item?
Do we want to give the town manager an idea of what it is so that he can prepare for it?
Might be good.
Yeah.
It has to do, it has to do with the approval of the radios that the fire chief requested.
Is it specific, the meeting of November, what's the date of the meeting, Ron?
The nineteenth. Are we voting on it or are we not?
Yeah, well, we're, we're, you know, we're just giving him more information so that we can, we all know what this meeting's about and then we can vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't, I don't need a motion. It's settled. All right, next, next we have citizen statements and petitions. Mike, do you have anything or Anthony?
Let me check. Comments from Cliff Potter on Facebook. Leave the construction babysitting to the real people that can do it right. Don't use underqualified observers, they messed up NBIS.
Okay, thanks, Cliff. If you're on. Okay, I guess that's it?
Yeah, nothing on the, nothing on the public comment emails.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Motion to adjourn.
Well, I would just like, I would just like to say, Rusty, I know you've been on this whole meeting and there were a number of issues for QA and M and I would just like to apologize that we had to table them all just due to the lack of information that we had. And I'm sorry you spent your night listening to us on everything unrelated to QA and M. But we promise it will all be on the agenda for our next meeting and we'll make sure it's all put together prior to the meeting so that we have all the information.
I do want to thank you all, town council, the committee. It's a fun town to work in and that makes all the difference. It makes my team work harder because we want to do bite by you and that's will be our goal all the way through. I will ask, because we've got a really tight schedule, if I can present a schedule of meetings to you at the next meeting just so that you understand the number of meetings. We've already started the process at our end because of the timeframe and we had reserved a time with the state also to get the prep meeting going in anticipation, understanding that it was not final, but it'll be confirmed tomorrow. So, if that works with your schedule and trying to get me just to give you a quick overview of the timeline and how, you know, how we will be getting there so then you can make a determination on, on how you formulate the committee as well.
I think that will help, Rusty.
Rusty, if you can get that to us ahead of time, get it to Mike ahead of time so he can get it out to us, so, you know, we can caucus and have a little bit of time to talk about it and discuss how we want to go about that. That would be great.
I was planning on putting it together for this Friday, so, thirty next week.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, can I also ask for the next meeting to have on the agenda, Mike, to provide us with some information about department head salaries throughout the state of Connecticut? I think that, I'm hearing that maybe we're really low and we need some information before we get to budget season.
Okay, Mike, did you get that?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I got it. Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.